Today is Tuesday, May twenty third. It's now six oh five P M. Town Council meeting in Town Council Chambers, eleven seventy Main Street, West Lower Rhode Island. Mark, you lead us some prayer.
Father, we pray that we live in a country that we are free to participate in our government and be part of our government. Pray, Father, that those of us who are elected will do the best we can to lead this town in the best of our, to the best of our abilities. Be with us during this meeting. Help us to make decisions that are good for the people. To Jason, then we pray amen.
Mid Lichati is absent. Councilman Messia is absent. Councilman Bajai?
Here.
Council vice president Williamson?
Here.
Council president Goslin?
Here.
There is a quorum on record. Approval of the minutes from May second, twenty twenty-three regular town council meeting. Approval of the minutes from May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three financial town meeting.
You have cancellation of taxes?
Come one more all in one.
Yep.
And cancellation of taxes as requested by the tax assessor in the amount of eight hundred fifty-six dollars and ninety-three cents.
Move approval of the consent agenda?
Second. Moving second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it.
Second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twelve, amending Article three, section eighteen of the Westworth zoning ordinance and zoning map. Rezoning SSS plat fifteen lots four ninety-six and eighteen from residential seven point five to business.
Move the ordinance?
Second. Moving second. Any discussion? Again, um, I know I just received an email, Mr. Cronin. I received an email from the realtor on this. This went back up for sale?
Yes.
Yes, the current thing, yeah, has fallen through again. Yeah, so try again.
Probably because the ordinance or just other issues?
I'm not sure. It's, uh, Attorney Richardson is, uh, representing the seller with regard to that, so it's not me directly involved, but I did hear, and I think more the delay than the actual circumstances.
Yeah, I think I heard that, you know, interest rates, number of car washes that are around town, that kind of thing, that maybe they found a better spot. Yes.
Like five, two mile radius.
Yes. My car looks horrible, so, yeah.
Any other, any comment on this ordinance? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Mark?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Business licenses, renewal of secondhand dealer license. So I'm going to read them all.
Nice. One, two, three, and four.
And renewal of junk dealer license, approval of event license for Rhode Island Elder Info's fourth annual calling all veterans day events. Request from the Phantom Fireworks Eastern Region LLC for firework for holiday and Sunday license.
Move approval of the licenses?
Second. Moving second. Any discussion? Any public discussion? Just come on up, state your name and address for the record.
Deb Burton, executive director of R I Elder Info. I would just like to ask if you would waive the application fee for the license as a five oh one C three nonprofit.
What is?
I believe one twenty-five dollars, I believe.
I think we have trouble waiving it, but it'll get paid. Okay?
Thank you very much. I'm looking forward to having this event here. Thank you.
Can I just make a suggestion that would you, would you please put that in writing to the attention of the town clerk and the manager?
Absolutely.
I think we get in trouble if we start waiving.
No, no, just so there's a record of it. What you do with her request is up to you guys. Just, it's the records of, the request would be on the record.
And I'm sorry, town clerk and? Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. The licenses that just been approved is April showers, estate services, Fall River Porn Brokers, Liberty Mobility, Gendrons, Reality Games, Budget Stretchers, Metro Wireless, Music Magic, and renewal for Junk Dealers, Angelo Padula and Sons, J and D Auto Salvage, Jerry Auto Pots, and all the other licenses have been approved.
Appointments and resignation, request from Janice Pashino for reappointment to the Tax Assessor's Board of Assessment and Review for a term ending March of twenty twenty-six.
Move approval of the request for Janice Pashino. She's actually done a terrific job, has a lot of experience in the field.
Second. Second, and I agree, Janice has always been involved. She was a long-term, longtime employee here, East Greenwich, and still volunteers and gives us plenty of service here in West Palm. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Request from Nathan Hannan for reappointment to the pension board for a term ending November eighteenth of twenty twenty-five.
Move approval of the request of Nathan Hannan, and that on the agenda should be H A and then O N. It is correct on the backup.
Second. Moving second. Any discussion?
How long is this board going to be active?
Yeah, I mean, no, no set date, so we need to keep it in place until we have the ability to get rid of it. And he actually has stepped up and when we needed people, he wants to see it through.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Resignation of Norman Landrach at municipal court judge effective June first of twenty twenty-four.
Move the resignation. Accept it with regret.
Second and second.
Although congratulations to him on his whatever endeavors he made.
And hopefully he stays the moderator.
Again, I, I know a lot of us were here when we appointed Norman, and he's always been great to work with, kind of, you know, as a judge. Sad to see him leave. I know he took over for a long-term individual, John Bernero, and he filled those shoes pretty well. So, uh, you know, you know, I guess like Mary Beth said, good luck in his future endeavor. Regret, I would have to say. All in favor?
Aye.
Along with that, I'm just, Norman is probably one of the most even-keeled people I've ever met in my life, you know, no matter what, he's always very good down there, but hopefully moves up from there as time goes on, so I wish him a lot of luck as well.
Works well with all the residents and everything. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
New business, April twenty twenty-three monthly financial report.
Good evening, good, frog. Good evening, council. Current year tax collections total sixty-four million nine hundred and seventy-two thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents, which is ninety-nine point nine eight percent of the budget for the current year and ninety-six point seven percent of the levy. We have collected three quarters and collections remains, remain strong. And actually, as of the end of April thirtieth, it is four, yes. Prior year tax collections total nine hundred and thirty-two thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars and two cents, which is equal to sixty-two point one six percent of the budgeted amount. This includes the adjustment for the two hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars for the sixty-day rule that we accrued back to fiscal year twenty-two. I do expect this number to grow now that tax sale proceedings have begun, and it did grow since we had the tax sale on May twelfth.
And how close are we going to get to budget for the prior year taxes? We're not, probably maybe one point two, I'm guessing. That's why I reduced it this year for twenty-four.
We're just doing so good in current, and we don't have motor vehicle anymore, which was a good portion of the prior. Overall, the revenues are at ninety-four point four one percent, which is higher than the expected eighty-three point three three. This is mainly attributed to strong tax collections and higher-than-expected building clerk, building clerk revenues and rescue billing. Expenditures are trending under budget at eighty point six, eighty point six five percent. This is two point six eight below the expected eighty-three point three three. The Civic Center has current operating expenditures of, that doesn't look right. I have to get updated that number right. It was like six hundred. Oh, no, it is right. I don't know why I second guessed myself. Five hundred and fifty-five thousand nine sixty-five thirty-nine and revenues of six hundred and fifty thousand six fourteen sixty-five. I have also attached a breakdown of the pension cost, so we can easily see how we are trending since our conversion to MERS, and I also updated the capital analysis. And as of four thirty twenty-three, our bank balance was twenty-three million seven twenty-two eight sixty-two point fifty-four. That included the state aid for the month for the school, and then they had gotten a bunch of other grants that totaled a pretty big chunk. I have moved.
I actually heard from Citizens Bank, and they're going to start investing more of our money, probably about eight million in over four, four and a half percent. So it's another chunk of money that's going to start running some interest.
Is that tied up in CDs? How are we going to do that?
I think it's going to be money market. Yeah.
It's nice seeing getting interest for our money now.
Yeah, we're doing.
Doing well. It's costing us money too.
Well, with the ARPA, though, we, we threw the ARPA incentive, and that's producing, you know, it's really enhancing what we got. Any questions?
Any questions for Kristen? Thank you, Kristen.
Request from Sixty East Main LLC for tax incentive agreement.
Move the request.
Second. I'm even here tonight.
I just wanted to get the discussion portion, to be honest with you.
Yeah. Um, go ahead.
Well, I, I, my inclination is that ten years is too long.
Well, I, I, I kind of said that to him via email. I know we just had some discussion during budget time. I know individuals came on and said, you know, the land deals and all that, you know, and we understand we need to maybe help and do something, but, you know, a ten-year deal on us, that size of project is kind of, you know, I, I, I don't disagree maybe with a five-year, but it's a great project. I've taught the facility. I think it's good for the neighborhood. It's good for the town, but I.
I agree with all of that. I just think that ten years seem, again, given the size of the project, and I know people will point to a factory street where we gave a twenty-year deal, but that's a far different. We are talking about a hundred and thirty-three units, you know, that's, so.
So, this is all residential?
Not, well, the car.
There's a storage park.
Or antique cars.
For the residents, for the resident, in the, in the building on the right-hand side.
Well, on, in the existing building that he has, he has right now, he's storing
Cars.
high-end cars or whatever, antique, whatever it may be in the basement, so he's leasing that out. And then there's the other mill on the left hand. Well, if you're looking at it, the right-hand side's the part where he wants to put all residential.
On the upper floors.
Upper floors, and then the left-hand garage is parking.
And then, I think rooms up.
And there's some solar panels and stuff like that.
Yeah, he's got an office over in the building that's on the left-hand side. I emailed today. I don't know if we talked to him, but I sent an email to one of the representatives that I have been talking to, asked him if they were going to show up, and I never got it. I just checked my email just now. I didn't see a response.
Yeah, and again, I, I know, yeah, I agree with you. I think it's good for the area. I mean, I went through the building, the left-hand building.
There had to be homeless people living in there. There were little tiny closets and stuff that looked like people had been living in them at one time. So it was nice that he's in there now and he's actually using it, which keeps people out.
Keeps them out, yeah. So, um, it was just, I know you just walked in. We were talking, you know, instead of ten-year deals, five-year deals, and depending on the size of the project.
And I, and I told him.
You know, and I, and I, I know via email going back and forth, I, I asked if they would consider a five-year, because it is my, it is my ward, and we're going back and forth conversing. And they said, no, they'd like the ten. I said, I'm not sure if the council, you know, based off, you know, budget time, we had people here via internet talking to us, saying, you know, we got to start looking at these land deals and, you know, and I don't say they were wrong. But I know we have to do something to help people when they first come in, but we also got to help who's here already too.
I had to agree with you on, on the five-year, and, and that would be the added value. So whatever value it has before the project starts, it would stay there. And then just to get the added part would get the incentive, whatever.
The way, the way it's written up now, but five years instead of ten. Yeah, it'd be twenty percent a year.
Right. Yeah, I think the first year is zero. Yeah, twenty-four years, then the sixth year is actually goes to a hundred percent. Yeah, I mean, I struggle with giving tax breaks for residential stuff to begin with. Businesses, I, I'm definitely more for tax breaks than those, but to improve the neighborhood or something that doesn't look so nice right now, I mean, I can, I can.
Well, it is an abandoned mill.
Yeah, that's what I mean. It's like, I could, I could see five. He must have spent a lot to clean it up, because that was a foundry that was in there, so it had to be a lot of stuff. That's probably why he's not putting any apartments on the ground floor.
Again, it's a, it's a great endeavor for him, and I, I think it's a great asset to the town, you know, but I would like to hear their side of it too. I hate to change it right now, not even, but I would have a conversation with themselves and say that the council would strongly suggest a five-year. I mean, the other two are not here tonight. No action tonight, but I would, I would take no action, but I would bring it back before us, maybe June sixth, give them a little bit of notice.
So there was a motion and a second.
You moved.
Yep.
The discussion.
I did.
No action.
Okay.
So you can either table it or take no other for that. But the session remains open, so next time if we're allowed to continue the discussion for two weeks, I'm ready.
Take no action then.
Thank you.
Any ones that's back on the first meeting in June?
If they're going to be here. If they're not going to be here, then, yeah, we'll wait, we'll wait till.
And, and quite honestly, depending on the size of the agenda too, I hate to, I mean, sometime.
If they're, yeah, depending on how big June is.
I don't, I don't know.
But if it is, just put them first on the agenda.
Certification of the town budget approved at the May eighteen twenty twenty-three all-day referendum.
Approval of the certification.
Second. Moving second. Discussion? Again, this budget did pass, but I, I will say the voter turnout was under five hundred.
Four twenty-two.
So, you know, we spend a lot of money, so I think maybe in the future, we're going to look at how we want to start managing the fin, uh, town financial meeting and the other referendum. I think it costs more in a day than for five hundred voters to come out.
They're both charter changes, so, yeah, I mean, something if we're going to try and get it done, we have to start now, yeah.
Again, I was, I was a proponent for this, but definitely.
I was too, because of the other finance, the other way we're doing financial meetings is just a piasco. weren't beneficial at all.
All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
FY twenty twenty-four tax levy resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second. Moving second. Discussion? Just want to any key numbers in?
And I don't actually remember doing this in the past like this, in this exact format. Is that a new format?
That's, it's the same format that they've always used. It's very weird wording that's in there, and it normally it goes up a little bit every year, but because we don't have motor vehicle as part of the levying anymore, I think the, like, the numbers are the same as what they were last year. The range of numbers for our, uh, collection ratio and.
And is this our own homegrown, or is it prescribed by the state? This is the state's wording?
Something that I think it's like that in every, I remember Cranston.
Really?
Yeah.
It is. Okay.
There's a shock.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it.
Resolution authorizing payment for rehabilitation and purchase of a playground equipment for Flat Top Playground.
Move the resolution.
Second. Moving second. Mark?
Our rec, Parks and Rec and DPW and the Recreation Committee worked hard to redo a plan for Flat Top, which was demoed just over a year ago now.
Two, I think.
Is it two, two years?
Yeah, I think so too, yeah.
So it's a long time coming, but we've come up with a, a new plan, significant improvements with structures, a combination of updated, upgraded, accessible equipment through somebody, through O'Brien and Sons, which is on the state M P A and has done other facilities here. And also some money included in this for some fencing for safety and security reasons. Unlike our other recreation, recent recreation upgrades, we decided to request use of our seventeen twenty-one funds out of the open space fee collection for this project. So in total, we're asking for, to, asking for you to encumber eighty-one thousand dollars for the rehabilitation and purchase of playground equipment at Flat Top Playground. And just so you're aware, that particular balance right now is, it probably has gone up, but it's just under two hundred and ninety thousand.
Any question?
Before this eighty-one?
Correct.
Yes.
If this is passed, when do you think it would start, and when do you think it would be completed?
Uh, well, I think the director will order the materials tomorrow, and I think there was, they were expecting a twenty-one lead time.
Oh, God. So that puts us into, that was basically with everybody, yeah. Because everybody was getting the ARPA money, and everybody's putting into the recreation, so everybody's ordering things. So twenty-five weeks, we're looking at October, by the time we, we're going to excavate everything with the DPW, and we're going to get everything cleaned out, and a lot of the equipment, and if she gets it sooner, great. If not, that's what we're looking at right now.
So does it, does it make sense if it's October, November to, to put it up for the winter?
Well, I mean. Does it make sense? Probably not, but I don't know if holding it will change anything. That was something I'll have to ask, right? I wouldn't think it would. I wouldn't think it would, but I don't want to. Uh, you know, hopefully they'll get it sooner, but.
It's modern ruggedized equipment, so if, if we have it, hopefully we'll get it sooner, but if we get it lined up and the ground's not frozen, I'd say we take advantage of it, so at least we can hit the spring rolling.
Right, uh, right now, when it came down, I get some, it's not even in my ward, but people from my ward, that's the only place I have to go, so, you know, it's. This is going to benefit everybody too.
It was, that playground was catered to the younger kids, specifically like seven under, like.
Yes.
It was definitely a good playground that.
This is going to be everybody. It's going to, from two to twelve, basically. Uh, so everybody will be able to, uh, the big question is, personally, the color that I picked out was green and brown, because it kind of blends in with the background. But we can pick any color we want if anybody has a blue. I don't think they're going to have black and orange, so. But I know blue and red's available, but I like the green and brown, kind of blends in with the area up there.
I just want something the children can play on, because then I can't give a color it is.
I agree with you.
And again, maybe this would be more of a discussion with the rec committee and our councilman who represents that ward.
Who's also on the rec.
On the rec committee representing the council, so there's just a little brief discussion with them and see what they.
Yeah, because I want to order it as soon as possible. I'm not, I don't want to set up a meeting because of what happened last time, so.
I, I mean, just brief discussion. I, like I said, I'm, I'm with Councilman Bajai. Whatever color it is, up there is.
Be careful. Don't say that.
I would, I would be foolish with it. I just want to, uh, make sure we're on the same page, but I will, I'll be, once you sign the resolution, I'll, I'll get everything going tomorrow and you know, ask for to put a fire under the people to get it as fast as possible.
Yeah, I, I'd give also Councilor Lichati a call in the morning. I know he's out with another family emergency tonight, so.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Consideration of supporting Governor McKeese's warrant, three sixty-five R I, tentative in signing the Rhode Island Municipal Education Compact.
I'd move it for discussion.
Second. Second. Mark?
Uh, most of you are aware, it's been well-publicized over the last few weeks, that the governor has an initiative to increase learning opportunities for our students from the traditional one hundred and eighty days to the three hundred and sixty-five days. More focused on the non-school settings. So this initiative is pushing for what I would term partnerships and pledges from community governments, in my mind, to support the work the school is doing by helping with outside programming, whether it be recreation departments, summer camps, libraries and, and such, to, to help enhance those learning opportunities. Uh, I sent you a lot of material. I think we're all well aware that, you know, there's issues in the first place enhanced by COVID. So any type of aggressive acts to facilitate learning opportunities and funding sources for those are typically welcome and appreciated. I know there's some concerns on how that really plays out. Nothing has been enacted yet. There's supposed to be an R F P going out sometime in June with, as the budget settles, what type of funding is going to be offered? Um, I believe it's through state ARPA funds. Not a significant amount when you divide it by all our cities and towns, but in my opinion, it looks like it's, looking like it's going to be a pilot program to kind of kick off some new ideas. So in my mind, unless there is some significant obstacles that would cause problems for our school department, I believe that at this point, from the research that I've done and in the Zoom that we participated in, it would be a worthwhile endeavor to obtain those funds and partner with the schools where we can, and like I said, more importantly, see if we can do some programming with the recreation departments, the summer camp that we offer, because it's, it's a two-year plan, so it's not something that's probably going to be in place for any time before the start of the next school year and next spring and summer.
So I, I, Mark and I both participated in the Zoom. And as I said at that time, I can't believe anyone would be against this. My only concern is the devil's in the details, and an R F P hasn't even been created yet. So who knows what?
Well, and that's, I'm glad you said that, because devil is always in the details, and I was looking for details, and they weren't giving any details. And that's where I struggled, even on the Zoom meeting, I asked specifically, where are the details? And, uh, his answer was basically, we want to leave the details up to each community to come up with stuff on their own. Which, in a way, I'm glad, because you don't want it overstructured, because that's what we have a problem with in our society today, is overstructure on everything, and everything's pigeonholed into one category. But at the same time, I think there should be some guidelines to guide us, and I really don't know of any or seen any, so.
I actually did reach out to the superintendent again, just to have a conversation, and she had some more conversation. I guess these will be signed by the municipality, and I said, that's great, but if it puts an onus on the schools, that's not fair for us to do without knowing what the, the details are. She was under the impression that within a week or two, we would have an R F P. So while I absolutely support it, I think some of the ideas that you talked about, I don't know if it's possible to make math fun, but to be able to do that up at, uh, up at the summer camp, whether it's math or English or, or computer, to get some sort of class in there, the, the FAFSA, encouraging that at the library, those are things that are easy that we can do, but I don't know that I would sign it until I know more of the details. I, I, I don't know. That's just my, my gut feeling.
Yeah, and I like, I like the concept of it.
Yeah.
To get kids off the couches, away from electronics, you know, doing stuff and learning stuff is, you know, me, fantastic. I like that concept, but if it ends up being something where they're just going to go from their home, sitting on a tablet, staring at it, to the library, sitting on a tablet and staring at it, I don't see where that's any beneficial, benefit at all.
So I think we have to actually partner and truly work with the schools to figure out what that looks like, and, and they will play a role in that. And some of these funds I would assume would be to pay stipends for teachers to be there or to have the library open different hours. I, I'm not sure what that is, because we don't know what, what the requirement is.
I can make a suggestion. You, the council can support the concept, and prior to signing on or obligating the town to any type of financial or any other type of, you know, obligation, you could have.
Or obligating the town to any type of financial or any other type of, you know, obligation, you could have a workshop with the library. Representatives of the school, um, was it Oxon Rex? Any, any of the components that would be there.
Those were the people on the Zoom.
Right, so.
So we, that was part of it.
Right, so before you sign up.
Again, we wouldn't sign a contract without knowing the details and that's.
So you could support the concept and just.
I think the concept's great. I like it.
Keep it on the agenda or schedule a workshop, but you guys would have control of the ball anyway.
Yeah, and, and I'm not sure a workshop is necessary, but it won't be a.
Sure.
A bad idea. Right, right, right. So I, I would take no action other than to say that, yes, we, I do support the concept and love to know what the details are.
I'll second that.
No action.
Resolution authorizing the purchase of new, a new engine and tower ladder.
Move the resolution.
Second. Chief?
You have big toys, chief.
These are very big toys. Very big, expensive toys. So, um, we have been looking for a ladder company for quite a while. Um, the Mid-Mount Ascendant from Pierce Manufacturing. Uh, came out in two thousand and eighteen. It has a lot of capabilities, um, that no other dealers, no other. Apparatus have. It has a forty-two foot length overall, which gives it a, um, thirty-five foot turning radius to turn around in a street. Which is real, very incredible, like if they can do that. They've done a lot of modifications that when it came out, just as, as a firefighter who's kind of in tune, I had some concerns about. And, um, the engineering that has gone into it, it's been in the street for five years, have all been accomplished. I, I think it's, it's a truck that is, um, very serviceable and especially designed for a community like Oz, with narrow streets. And, uh, it has a hundred-foot reach for a mid-mound. Um, it's the only one on the market that had a hundred-foot reach. The others all have ninety-five foot reaches. Uh, it will go twenty degrees below grade. Um, there's, there's a video of it going down like to a river and I could envision us having, you know. That capability and using that capability in our community. Couple of notes, let's see. Turning radius, the overall length, again, the, um, the other ones that we looked at, we looked at three different trucks, um, were forty-seven to forty-eight feet. And it's the swing in the back was substantially wider than what this swing is. The financing for this and, um, you know, we got our, uh, Don Johnson had written a, uh, grant. We are eligible for a million dollars from FEMA. We got it caught nine hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars, almost maxed out on it. Um, the federal share is nine hundred and one thousand dollars. We have to come up with ninety thousand to meet that. Grant, which will come to about, will less than fifty percent of what the apparatus is going to cost. We are going to use opera money in addition, and we have our apparatus replacement plan. Uh, we're gonna take part of the down payment from the apparatus plan. We've, uh, I estimated what our loan payment will be. And it will be contained within the apparatus replacement plan going forward. It fits into what our anticipated revenues will be. Um, as that program continues throughout. So are there any?
Any questions for the chief?
Not necessarily for the chief, but the ten-year lease, how will we go about getting that, Kristen? I mean, it's a horrible time to be doing that. So when do we need to? Okay, when, when do we have to actually go out for the? Oh, all right. Okay. Correct. Right. Okay.
Is there a chance the rates could be worse if we wait? Still talking about increasing them, so.
I just, and, and I assume there'll be a provision that we can refinance if we need to down the road. Yeah, okay, all right.
Yeah, and the build time again for the ladder truck is going to be between, you know, up to two and a half years. You know, before we see the truck. Truck that we're ordering now. And the rescue we were talking, just talking about, we ordered in July of twenty twenty-one with a twelve-month build time. And we're expecting that to be in this July twentieth. Okay, so.
How's the frame?
The frame? The frames were took, yeah, the chassis is what took, yeah.
You know, because that, that was the number one issue on our old, well, I want to say oldest, but. It's not oldest one on our fleet.
Oh, yeah.
Was always in the shop and always being repaired and.
Yes, so that, that was the, the, uh, I don't want to mention, but that wasn't a Pierce, I will say. So the frames on the Pierce are dipped and galvanized, okay? And, uh, so they're, they're guaranteed, they're. Strong frames.
Thank you. Any questions for the chief? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Thank, thank you to you and Don Johnson for your hard work. Don is actually under-recognized. He does a lot of grant writing for that, for the fire department and he's been doing it for years.
Upcoming appointments, so we use water review, equipment to fill vacancy as an alternate member for a three-year term. So we use water review, equipment to fill vacancy as a regular member for a three-year term. Water assessment, review, appointment to fill vacancy as a regular member for a three-year term. West Rock Housing Authority appointment to be reappointed. For a five-year term. Expiring November twenty twenty-seven. Tuxit River Authority appointment to be reappointed for a three-year term expiring June of twenty twenty-six. Public forum.
Over comment?
We, we. We didn't accept your resignation.
As the chief said, get out.
I watched him in the back. He was throwing you out. I, I was always on time for court. Sorry, a little late this evening. Norman Landrech eighty-eight, Silver Lane. I did want to take the opportunity to thank the council members. Uh, for what was a terrific tenure as a town of West Walk Municipal Court Judge. Uh, moving on to a bigger venue potentially, but, um, I do want the council to. And take my appreciation, uh, John Brunero will be landing Saturday. He was appointed the, uh, Associate Municipal Court Judge when I first got on, so he will serve at no cost to the town. While you fill my vacancy and certainly I'd be available to discuss vacancies, understanding it's a West Walk residency requirement. Um, I do know there's a five-year. Practice of law required. I'm not sure if that's necessary, just to shed a little on the council because it's not necessaries. In any of the courts in Rhode Island, so, and clearly something as municipal court, I think you'll find some very intelligent. Young generation lawyers, uh, that are out age, you know, they're younger than the aging attorneys that might be at the council. But I do want to thank all my clerks, certainly, I go back in the days when, uh, the town manager, not was actually the prosecuting officer then with all the guys. Certainly Colonel Levine and Donnie Archibald. I think the council got it right with their choice of town clerk and Sarah Repose. She's absolutely wonderful. Did no municipal court where she came from and she runs a fine ship when, when she ran it for, for our, uh, court. My girl Paula and all the clerks. Everything was great. I just wanted to stop and say that and thank you very much.
Thank you, Norman.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And good luck. But, but Mark did have a request wh- while you were not here.
Yes.
You still gonna be moderator on occasion?
I don't really have to worry about any problems.
Yeah.
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 Thank you very much.
The five people might throw up. And good luck on your future endeavors. Any other public comment? Just come on up, state your name and address for the record.
Diane Marchessault. Of twelve Keepit Street.
Hi, how are you?
Good. Um, I'm here representing my mother Louise Mooshan. Who have a handicap parking sign put up at the apartment of Cross and Street. Thirty and thirty-two, because we have handicapped people on the first floor and the second floor. And we're constantly calling the police department because. The man next door's father comes with a big motorhome and parks it on the street and blocks the sidewalk. And I got handicapped people there.
And this is thirty-two Crossland?
Thirty, thirty-two, thirty and thirty-two.
So the town manager, what is it? Thirty, thirty-two Crossland.
Your Ashenball told me to come.
So what we can do is, he told you to come, so now we can submit it to the, um. Traffic Study Committee and they can send a recommendation to us and, uh, go from there.
Okay.
It does take a little time. Um, they do have to meet themselves. They meet once a month. Um, and then there would be an ordinance in place. The ordinance we brought to us. And then we would have to vote on it two times. And then after the second time it's voted on, it's twenty days to go into effect. So it does take a little time. So bear with us, we can put it in and, and they can go down there, do their research and whether or they recommend it to us. If they don't recommend it to us, we would recommend Major Ashenball to get in touch with you. So if you want to leave your name and number.
He has.
Okay, he has it, so then.
Want to call me and tell me I said, be here.
So did you say they were handicapped?
They're handicapped people.
But, but there were no signs previous, okay. And how long have they been there?
The one downstairs, she's been there twenty-something years.
Okay.
And the one upstairs, they have a little, little boy, probably a man, but he, they gotta hold him to walk.
Okay.
Yeah. That's understood.
And they both have handicapped placards, you know, for their cars.
Okay, we'll, we'll look at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Um, not sure if we need to move into executive session. I know. Mark did leave that open, so it's up to you guys if, if you read it, if you want an update or.
I, I don't have anything new other than what I sent to you, so if you don't have questions that I can bring back for clarification.
Wasn't there a date yesterday or today?
Yes, but it wasn't, it didn't offer something that they need to come before you to say, you want to proceed and this is our strategy.
Okay.
So.
There's nothing new, I don't.
No.
All right.
A motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you.
Hey Paula, can you hear me? Yeah. Hi, guys.
Hi, Sarah.
Was nice and quick, right?